Hey, thank you. I would like to call the June 26 special meeting of the North Smithfield School Committee to order at 3:11 PM. Roll call, please.
Good morning.
Yeah.
May I?
Here.
Here. Here.
Thank you very much. We have a quorum. Pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the people of which we stand. One nation, for God, in this law, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to apologize for the inconvenience of the last minute changes to the school committee's regularly scheduled meeting date and time. It was necessitated by the fact that we did not have a quorum for either of our two meetings for several different reasons. And we were not aware in advance that that would be the case. So we are sorry, but here we are today. I'm assuming that there are people who would like to speak under good and welfare, oh, excuse me, public comment and community comments. And when you come up, would you please identify yourself by name and address? And just so you know, we don't go back and forth with a discussion under public or community comments. However, we are here to listen, to take notes. And please know that we appreciate your perspective and your voice. Do we have a list over there?
My name's Christy Creighton. I reside at 491 Socket Hill Road, and I am a lifelong resident of the town of North Smithfield. Good afternoon. My daughter Avery is a proud Lady Northman cheerleader. And on May 24th, I sent an email to all of you detailing serious concerns about how Mr. McNulty is handling the future of our cheer program. I stand before you today, not only as a concerned parent, but as an advocate for these students who deserve to be heard, respected, and supported. I have brought with me a binder documenting a timeline of events and examples of unprofessional conduct by Mr. McNulty. All 22 pages were shared with the Valley Breeze and were the basis of the article in last week's issue. I'll be happy to share this information if you would like. However, since my time is limited to three minutes and my complaints have at this point been published, I want to focus on two very important topics. The philosophy of the North Smithfield School Department and its stated complaint resolution process. The first core belief from the district's philosophy reads as follows. The North Smithfield School Department believes that learning flourishes in a supportive environment. Therefore, it values the initiatives and rights of its students. Every student is encouraged to make decisions, express opinions, and develop personal values. If this philosophy truly guides your actions, why are you allowing this to happen? Taking the cheer program in a different direction is essentially doing the very opposite. Why did Mr. McNulty choose to ignore emails from some of these athletes when they expressed how losing their coaches would be vital to their high school experience? Yes, he did finally respond, but only after these girls met with Dr. Burns and showed her these emails along with his non-existent responses. At the March school committee meeting, when Mr. McNulty was granted full-time employment, which, side note, I am still not sure how that transpired since the position was never publicly posted. However, at that meeting, Mr. St. Jean shared our new athletic director's laundry list of qualifications. Let's not be naive. Qualifications on paper don't always translate to stellar leadership in practice. And I think it would have been beneficial as well to investigate his work history as he has had many positions within a short period of time. Moving on, another pillar of the district's philosophy reads, "The North Smithfield School Department acknowledges its obligation to help students assume a productive role in the community, the nation, and the world." If this is truly a priority, then why is this situation being handled with such blatant unprofessionalism in disregard for the impact on these students? This is not a kind of leadership or role modeling that we should be showing our children. Fortunately, as you can see, these students have strong parents who can help them understand that what is happening right now is completely wrong. Now regarding to the district's complaint resolution process, which states, "The North Smithfield School Department affirms its commitment to ensuring an environment for all students and employees that is fair, humane, and respectful, one that supports and rewards based on relevant considerations and is free from illegal discrimination. What is happening to our two highly respected and decorated cheer coaches goes against that entire statement. When did we stop upholding the fundamental rights of individuals to speak, to defend themselves, and to preserve their reputation and integrity? Finally, I'll close with this. As much as I appreciate great photography, I would respectfully ask that Mr. St. Jean set the camera down and focus his attention on the pressing issues affecting our students' lives. This is not about optics. It's about values, leadership, and doing what's right for the young people that you have pledged to support." Thank you.
Helena Harris.
Hi, my name is Helena Harris, and I live on 97 St. Paul Street. I had pretty much the same concerns, but I have found out that these girls, the next five seniors to graduate, have wrote a letter about our coaches, and I would like to read that, as they cannot do it themselves. As the five upcoming seniors on this team, this was supposed to be our final season cheering. We had planned to celebrate everything we have ever learned, worked for, and become while being part of this team. Finding out Coach Alicia and Coach Val never asked to look in a different direction has completely changed what this season means. It is difficult to put into words what it feels like to lose the people who have shaped you, pushed you to your full potential, and always believed in you. Coach Alicia has been there for us whenever we needed her and more. Through school stress, personal struggles, and even high school drama, she put her time, energy, and tough love into the program. She built our practices, are full of high expectations and love. She held us accountable, expected our best effort, and celebrated what we gave. A coach like her is rare and irreplaceable. She built this program into something so strong and stable and something we are all so proud to be a part of. Coach Val has brought our talent and dedication to the team. She challenged us to be sharper, perform with confidence, and to think before you do. Her level and way of coaching has raised the bar for what this program could be. Beyond her teaching us, new stance or better technique, she was someone who would always push us. She saw our potential and would never let us settle for anything less than what we were capable of. We imagined our senior year alongside both our coaches at our last practice, last comps, senior night, and now that vision is getting lost within this news. Varsity senior Kat, Kenzie, Julia, Madeline, and Trista. Thank you.
Jen Dano.
Good afternoon, Jen Dano, 1386 Iron Mine Hill Road. I am the mother of one of the graduating seniors on this year's cheer team. I'm going to really just speak to you about the impact that the coaches have had on my daughter as well as my family. Connecting with the high school was really challenging for Madeline, kind of following in her siblings' footsteps. It was tough kind of coming in the year after he graduated. She had a hard time kind of connecting with some of the staff members that were there, kind of walking in his shadows. Through that, she decided to join Cheer, which, as a mother, I rolled my eyes and chuckled and said, "I cannot believe you are going to join Cheer." After the first comp season, I was completely blown away. The athletic ability to be a cheerleader goes beyond anything I ever would have expected. I watched her grow from being a very insecure, mouthy pre-teen to becoming a very poised and a very poised young lady. Alicia and Val have been there for Madeline through a lot of ups and downs. Medical concerns that we had, some mental health issues that we had. And every single step of the way, they were checking in on me, they were checking in on Madeline. And the only reason that Madeline kind of fought through all of that was because of Cheer. So really, kind of what started off for me as an eye roll, and I can't believe that that's what you're going to do, has turned into a program that I wholeheartedly support with my students down at the elementary school. I love when they tell me they're doing Cheer because I just know how powerful you have to be to do that. And without Coach Val and Coach Alicia's guidance and support and love, my family would be in a much different place than we are now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kaitlin Farmer.
My name is Kaitlin Farmer, and I live on 6 Edward Ave, North Smithfield, Rhode Island. And I'm here in support of Alicia specifically and how she really helped me this year to be involved in the school, do something that I love, and even find confidence and leadership in myself that I didn't even know I had. At the beginning of the winter season, I knew my role on varsity would be very minimal, so I thought I was done with my cheerleading journey. However, Coach Alicia decided to have a junior varsity team instead of having eight alternates on the varsity team, which took up more of her time. This decision impacted me greatly. Not only was I able to participate in athletics, but I developed meaningful friendships with the freshmen that I would have never had become close with had it not been for this new team. At the end of the season, we decided, or we ended up bringing home a state championship, all thanks to Alicia's decision to dedicate more time and energy to us. As a graduated senior of North Smithfield High School, I'm proud to say that I had Alicia as a coach, and I hope that others can say the same in the future and have the same experiences that I had with the cheerleading program and with Coach Alicia. Thank you.
And Carrie Farmer.
Hi, I'm Carrie Farmer, 40, Old Lewis, Gwsete Pike, in North Smithfield. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the cheer coaches and specifically Alicia. I have a lot of, I have over 30 years of experience in cheerleading. I have been a middle school, high school, All-Star coach. I've been a choreographer. I've been an All-Star gym owner. And most importantly, a parent of two daughters who had the the experience with Alicia and Val. When I first came here to North Smithfield, I saw when Alicia started coaching here 15 years ago. I was, it was a beginning program and everything, and I had, over the years, 15 years, I have watched it grow and just continually get better and better and better because of the dedication that the coaches have put forth toward this program. And it has really become from a beginner program to a very elite team and program in the state. And coaches are, cheerleading coaches are a dime a dozen. I'm sure that anybody would want to come in and coach these remarkable athletes. But I just want to caution you about the safety of coaches coming in at an elite level without the experience needed, that it can become a safety issue. And so I just want to start with that. And just to point out that this doesn't happen overnight. Someone who has dedicated 15 years of her life to building this program really shows the dedication that she's had toward the program. Not only does she, you know, do practices and competitions and things like that, but it's the time after hours. The choreography, the coaches' clinics that I know she goes to, the reaching out to other coaches in the area. She has a very good rapport with all the coaches in the area. She's highly respected. And the ability, the willingness to allow other people to come in and help the team, that's remarkable. And I don't want that to be overshadowed. As a parent, I felt confident sending my daughter to practice, knowing that she was safe, that she was cared for, that she was progressing athletically, and that she was given opportunities for lifelong skills like leadership, confidence, teamwork. And as a parent, that's all I can ask. And I feel that Alicia has gone above and beyond to support my daughter and to provide her the opportunities that I I would look for in a varsity cheerleading coach. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to say anything?
This is Brandon Morris from 43 Farsell Drive. When you go to these meets and you watch these girls and how close they are, this is like they're a big, huge family. And by getting rid of that coach that has been coaching these girls for six years, you're breaking up that family. And I don't think it's right if there was a complaint, why wasn't it resolved? And why weren't we told in what direction you're going in? That's all I'd say.
Anyone else? Yeah.
I'm Avery Creighton, 491 Socket Hill Road. I am sure people might know kind of who I am since the Valley Breeze article was mostly revolved around like myself and my mom. But even though like that was what the whole article was about, it was truly just stating the problems that were really wrong, that were happening now. And I just think it's really important to like, obviously, we need to think about the past and think about like what has happened. And like, I'm happy that we do have people who care about the cheerleaders and care about the coaching, but not in the right way. It's definitely really heartbreaking having to hear that your coaches are getting basically taken away from you. Because even though I am, I was just on the JV team my freshman year, I have already had such a great bond with both my coaches that I think every student athlete should have with any coach. And they're just really great people. And I think everyone should think about the future, think about the future teams that should be led by Coach Val and Coach Alicia because I truly don't think Northman Cheerleading would be very successful without them. No matter how talented a new coach is, and no matter how skillful they really are, because we already have a family. And I would really hate to see our family be taken apart. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Yes.
Hello, my name is Julia Gutierrez from 25 Pond Hill Road. I did not add my name onto the list because I did not think I had to do this, but I think if you look around with the room full of cheerleaders, it is pretty amazing to see that they really support their coaches. I do feel like there is some type of disconnect somewhere. And I think that's where we need to meet. I think something needs to happen where everything is put on the table and both coaches and director, which I haven't had the pleasure of meeting. I also work for the school department. And it is amazing to see these young ladies show up for their coaches. They have had great experiences. My daughter, who is also a cheerleader, continues to be motivated and encouraged to become a better cheerleader, right? It might seem like this is something insignificant, but this is definitely important to each person that has showed up today and for the team in itself. Again, like I said, going back to, I do feel like there is a disconnect somewhere, and it's easy to get caught up with the he said, she said. I do think that it needs to be something where team needs to come together, sit down, put it all on the table, and see where that disconnect is so that we can move forward with the coaches that we currently have right now.
Anyone else? Well, I thank you all very, very much. I just want to make it very, very clear that we have no intention of canceling the cheer program. All athletic positions, coaching positions are being posted for review, which has not been done in the past, and it definitely should have been done. I hope you understand that our hands are tied to some extent because there are just things that we cannot discuss publicly. But please know that we appreciate your thoughts and your comments, and thank you very much. Anyone here want to add anything?
I just, all of you coming out and speaking on behalf is a very powerful example of your public voice. And yes, there was a disconnect. There was a conversation that happened that should have stayed private and not leaked out to everybody because everything hadn't been resolved and the full picture wasn't there. So I just want you to know the fact that you came out and you, and how you spoke, how eloquent you were, how passionate you were, is a very powerful thing, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you very much. So actually, we are going to move on to our agenda and
We want to take a couple of minutes reset.
Couple of minutes reset, exactly. All right, I think we will continue with our agenda. So moving on to the consent agenda, does anyone want any particular item removed? We all set? All right, and I'm looking for a motion to accept the consent agenda as written. So moved. There's second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And now we're on to the superintendent's report.
All I want to do is point out the document that I sent out earlier, the great work that's been done at the schools and with athletics and music. I sent it to you. I sent it to Town Council. I shared it with all the families. I put it on Facebook. I put it on the website. Yeah, I think that's the extent, but I just wanted to share that and thank everyone, teachers and students and administrators for a very engaging, busy, productive year.
Thank you. It was very nice to see all the positive things that happened in that seven-page report. So thank you very much for doing that. Okay, the informational section. I don't know if there's anything that you want to comment on?
There's so many wonderful people, you know, whether it's the ESI program or our new hires. We've had some, we have some remarkable people coming on board.
Super, super. Thank you very, very much. Old business. Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
I want to add.
Do you want to move the mic closer?
Good. You know, we routinely just see the extent of school year people and the summer school, the summer programs we have. Is there anything as a school group we can be doing? Do you, we never really, we don't really keep a lot of track of what goes on in the summer. We know what goes on. Is there anything we can do to support? Do we need any more support for the programs or is everything, anything else that we can do to support the program?
We're good because this is also paid for through federal funds. So there's enough funds. We've had no problem hiring top-notch teachers and support staff to work the summer ESI program. So if there was something, I would let you know, and maybe what I can do is have Christine Wells here next time. Oh, she just stepped up. I could have her speak on the program.
I think it's good just to, to the extent of that, just to guide, and I've done a lot of ESI stuff, and I know it's a lot of people, it's kind of invisible to a lot of people. There's a lot that goes on in ESI that's really strong for some kids, and it's good to know that, like, the schools are always going on. And it's a lot, it's amazing how much stuff's going on in the summer in terms of education.
And Jen, did you get air conditioners in each of those rooms? Yes, so we can't do air conditioner for the building, cannot afford that, but we got AC units, floor units, to go into all of the rooms being utilized at NSES or ESI.
Are they staying there for the future, the air conditioners?
They're going to have to move around, you know, so it depends. I mean, we're not, we're not able to equip every room, and we can't afford to do a central thing for the school, but it certainly is needed. Especially NSES because it's built so close to the water table and it's always been an issue.
And I'm actually also thinking of the third floor in this building, which I know is
Yes, and we have various prices for, it still starts at a million and goes up no matter how we look at it. Okay.
Thank you. Moving on to old business, any updates on the 25 fiscal year? Okay, very good. Then moving on to the 26.
So I will need a motion to adopt our budget number that the town approved, not officially adopted yet, but since we're not getting any local appropriation, I don't see any problem moving forward to vote to approve our number.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so you're looking for, I am looking for a motion to approve the fiscal year 26 budget in the amount of $32,365,189. There's second? Do we need a roll call vote on that?
I have just one question. I think I had this discussion with someone on the other side, can't remember if it was the superintendent or Alicia, but our state aid, that the number we looked at before, that number did not change after the last budget passed the House and the Senate?
It changed right before they voted. Fiscal House changed the number on 6/10. It went up a little bit. And then on 6/20, they, they gave us our enacted, and it was the number from the House fiscal from 6/10. So it varied a little bit.
And the governor, it was reported, the governor would say he wasn't going to sign the budget, but he's not going to sign it.
It's not signed, but
He's not going to veto it, did you?
No, I don't think so. It's just going to stay the way it is.
And we're good.
Yeah.
Say about that is that, you know, what's interesting at the town fall meeting during the budget, a couple of times it came up, school department windfall. Let me tell you. It's not as windfolly as it seemed at the beginning, you know, back in January. We have, we've had to hire more staff than we didn't anticipate. Mainly, and I'm looking directly at that table over there, our kindergarten, that went from 80 students to 133 registrations. So we went from five kindergarten classes to So we went from five kindergarten classes to seven, which I think is a wonderful testament to NSES and the families coming in. But at some point, we're going to run out of space. So it's actually, so this windfall we had, it's not like we're flush with cash. We're going to make everything work. That's the difference.
I have a question about that. Is there a little bit of wiggle room because it's only June? We still have July and August to get through. So if we have more kindergarten registrations, is there?
I'm hoping that going to seven gives us the extra space.
I would, please just refer Val from like 2022 to Morgan, 2022 to Morgan. I do think because of the outreach that we did early and often at the beginning of the school year, I'm sorry, at the beginning of 2025, we reached out to all families who potentially have a kindergartner who are current students in Smithfield. We were able to pull and extract that data from our students from every campus. So we've done a lot of outreach. So anybody new is really just the house for sale, which there are quite a few. So if you'd like on campus, make sure you don't have. But yeah, I don't think we have many kids going to replies next year. I think we've been able to pull back on quite a few of those kids. Any kids that are currently attending RIDE, are students who have siblings that are active.
Thank you. That's, that's good. So we're looking for a roll call vote. I think we've made a motion and seconded it? Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
So the motion passes and thankfully, and Alicia, thank you for all the hard work that you did in the many meetings at the town council and I'm glad that's behind us. Very good. Thank you. I was wondering actually if you could explain for the public's benefit why the school department is not getting any capital funding and how we're going to be able to continue working on the necessary capital project?
So it was explained that, so the town splits the school department budget into two different areas. There is the operational and the capital. And operational, we didn't ask for anything. Level funding was okay. We did ask for capital. We did submit a capital plan. And I think originally they were going to put $200,000 in it, which is the kind of thing that outside of the big projects, we always ask for at least a minimum of $200,000 to go into the revolving fund, which is what we use for RIDE-approved projects that we get reimbursed on. So it's spending good money and getting money back. They decided not to fund that because of what a windfall we had, which I just kind of explained. It's not quite the windfall that people think it is. But it's something that could happen and will make it work. Because one of the things that we do is we're very careful with the money during the year. We never, ever try to spend, certainly overspend what we've been allocated. We use it wisely and if there are funds remaining, which we purposely are very conservative and frugal, that goes into the fund balance, which then we can use for capital projects. And that is how we've been able to fund so many projects is just by carefully managing the money along the way, by applying for grants and finding other sources of revenue that can be applied towards facilities, the football field, you know, renovations and all of that. So we're just incredibly clever at trying to work things out so that we're able to, with limited funds, keep moving things forward.
Thank you. And I just, I wanted the public to be aware that we will be able to continue the projects that are necessary. Thank you. Okay, and do you want to explain anything about the teacher recalls?
I think it's whatever, on your list, just about everyone.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation for the teacher recalls.
So moved.
There's second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, that's it. And the motion passes. Is there anything else? Okay, so it's a motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.